It is six o'clock and we will call the Kerrville City Council Meeting to Order. Thank you all for being here, staff and council. We will have an invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Kim Clarkson.
Will you please join me in prayer? God, we come before you tonight thankful for what you have provided us over the last 24 hours with the cooler temperatures and the rain that our land is in such desperate need of. We ask that you continue to bless us with the weather that will improve our minds, our bodies, and the soil. I want to thank you for our first responders always for everything they do to keep us safe and out of harms way and to thank you for a safe start to the school year for all our families and children. Look over all of us, we're making some important decisions tonight as we do in every meeting. Guide our hearts and our hands and our actions in all that you do. We ask in your name, all these things in your name, Father. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this time, here we have Stuart. We do have some announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everybody tonight. We have a couple of events, a big Saturday afternoon coming up this Saturday. And the very first thing will be the Mary Elizabeth Holsworth Butt Day, Saturday at the library. We're going to come celebrate the, we invite everybody to come celebrate with us the legacy of Mary Elizabeth Holsworth Butt and her role in the development of a memorial library. That's going to start at two o'clock, it's in the library meeting room, and following the presentation, the short string band will provide a musical performance and freshmen's will be available. So we encourage everyone to come out. This is just an amazing story about her and actually that entire family, so encourage you to be there with us. And that starts at two. As soon as it's over, we hope everybody kind of makes their way over to Lehman Park where we're going to have the Kerrville River Roadster Show. That starts at four o'clock. This is a big, fun event. This is our third year to do it. We're going to have food by Conchitas, music by The Flashbacks, and then I found out today that HCTC will be sponsoring Floats with a Cop from four to six p.m. So we invite everybody to come enjoy the River Roadster Show and also have Coke floats with members of Kerrville Police Department, another fun event. So that takes care of Saturday. And we also would remind that after our next meeting, we're going to have the Kerrville River Festival. So everybody needs to keep that on their calendar for September 17th. That'll be a Sunday from noon to nine thirty at night. Kyle Park and Michael Salgato will be the lead acts on that, so looking forward to that. One last thing, and this is next Wednesday, the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition, which is the City of Kerrville Board, will be hosting the International Overdose Awareness and Night of Remembrance. That's going to be at August 31st, which is next Wednesday, and it starts five thirty at the Arcade Theatre. So we invite everybody to come to that, too. And that's the announcements for this week from us, unless y'all have something.
Anybody have anything? Okay, I've got a couple of things I would like to mention if I could. Kudos to our Shriner Nursing Program. They were ranked number 10 in Texas, so that's a great thing, and they do a super job with that, so we're proud of them for that. We have received a thank you letter from the Heart of the Hills Golf Tournament, and I think actually they were thanking us, but I think we need to thank them also. They brought in, this was a couple of weeks ago, in July, in the heat, 200 golfers, they had families. These golfers come from not just Texas, but out of Texas. For many of them, this is a, it's an annual thing. They've been doing this for 76 years, and they just have thanked us and the golf, the Shriner Golf Course for all that they did for them. So that was a nice, nice thank you. And then, Chief Maloney, do you want to say something about your three alarm fund golf tournament coming up?
The Kerrville Professional Firefighter Association, they do an annual golf tournament for the 9/11, and that does go toward a three alarm fund that they use for families that are burnt out or need assistance after a fire or just assistance in general. So that event is coming up, but that is through the association, the Kerrville Professional Firefighters Association.
Okay, and I believe that's September 9th? September 9th?
9th, okay.
Yes, yes. Anybody would like to play golf for that?
It's that weekend, so the 9/11 weekend.
Yeah, thank you. All right, at this time, we have some presentations. Chief McCall.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to recognize some of our officers who do fine work for our community day in and day out. Recently, we attended the Mothers Against Truck Driving of South Texas Region Awards Banquet. We had several officers who were nominated and received awards during that banquet. Several of those officers are here tonight. As I call your name, if I get you to come up to the front for me. The Committed Hero Award was presented to Officer Ruben Valencia, Officer Daniel Verdel, Officer Jonathan Collier, Officer Jeff Robitaille, and Officer Tyler Cottonware. This award was in recognition of the work they do in DWI enforcement. All of these officers had well over 20 DWI arrests for the year, and Tyler Cottonware led that group with 49 arrests during that year. A lot of good work going on there every day by these gentlemen, keeping our roads safe and our communities safe. The Outstanding Service Award was presented to Sergeant Ed Holloway for outstanding dedication and commitment to DWI enforcement and education. Sergeant Holloway is one of our DWI instructors. He trains our officers in standardized field sobriety testing. And the Enforcement Hero Award was presented to Officer Tyler Cottonware for exemplifying an outstanding commitment to DWI education enforcement at the Kerrville Police Department. So thank all of you guys for the hard work you do, day in and day out. We appreciate that on behalf of the community and give you our award-winning officers.
Chief, I think we may have some families here. Could we have them introduced?
We do.
You've got some little ones, too, it looks like.
If you have family here, Tyler, if you want to start, you've got, you've got.
This is my wife, Shaila, here with my daughter Tinsley and my two boys, Rowdy and Ryland.
Thank you all.
We'll let you introduce your wife.
I'm sorry, that's my wife, Ashley.
All right, gentlemen, if you'll just come down to the dais and shake everybody's hand, good. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, sorry, sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. It's all right. We appreciate all of you guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Chief, thank you. All right, we will move on to the Visitors and Citizens Forum, and Shelley, if you will read that in for us.
Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council. Prior to speaking, you speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the City Secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the City Secretary before the item is called or read into record, and City Council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Oh, my goodness, okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, but before we do that, I would like to read the community vision. I think this is important that the public hear it. I'm not sure that the public always sees it. It is in every packet that we get. This is in front of staff for every decision that is made, and it's also in front of council. It's also in front of P&amp;Z and some of our other committees. So I think it's, I think it's good for us to hear this, and we are making some visionary decisions tonight for the next year. So I would like to read this to you. Kerrville will be a vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive community that respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it, seeks to attract economic growth and development, provides opportunities for prosperity, personal enrichment, and intellectual growth for people of all ages, and does so while preserving the small-town charm, heritage, arts, and culture of a community. Big statement, we listen to it all the time. All right, at this time, we will move to number four, the consent agenda, and do we have any items that need to be pulled from the, from, from that agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Four B and four C have been pulled by a citizen.
All right. Counsel?
Mayor, I'll request to pull four A and four D.
Four A and four D, all right. That leaves us, anyone else? That leaves us with four E and four F and four G.
I'll move that we approve items four E, F, and G on the consent agenda.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. Thank you. All right, let's look at four A. Roman?
Okay, four A, this is regarding the agreement for the purchase of carbon products. Let's see, a couple of things. First, I would just like to say on the outset that the summary statement did state that a copy of the agreement was available for viewing in the City Secretary's office, but because every agreement is different depending on what it is, I would appreciate it being included in our agenda packet. I know I've asked that before and for this specific reason. So I got a copy of it after requesting it, and so I have a couple of questions and then a couple of points, I guess. Can, is the city able to terminate or opt out of the agreement if the product that we're purchasing from them becomes available by somebody else at a better or more competitive price?
Yes.
And then after...
With 30 days notice and due writing and everything, if there's some qualifications.
I didn't, I couldn't find a termination clause somewhere in here.
Yeah, we visited with William about, that was one of our specific questions, if something, if another manufacturer does come into, come into being between now and the end of this contract, is there a way out? And the answer was yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then a couple of others. After, so after, another thing I did notice is the first paragraph of the agreement states that we're entering into the agreement on July 25th of this year. Would that be so that the term starts at a time that we need it to for a specific reason or? And that just goes to something I'm going to, I have in a minute after that.
I think the timeframe likely just needs to be updated and it will be within the final draft.
Okay. We've been dealing with them for quite a while to get this cleaned up. We may have missed that date.
Okay. And one last thing I noticed is that the term of the agreement, which is on section two on page one, says that it'll be from the effective date, which is that whatever that updated date is, right now, July 25th, until it'll extend through December 31st of 2026. So there is, the second, that's one sentence. The second sentence says that, there's a provision in that section that states that the agreement will automatically renew every year for a term of one year. And I didn't see that in the summary statement, so I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that until I reviewed the actual copy of the contract. So my question was, why would, could you explain why we need the contract to be automatically renewed after the term of 2026?
I think what my understanding is that it's renewed every year up to the 2026, that's the end of the contract time. And so it starts right now in 2022, goes through every year annually to 2026.
Okay, can I get some legal clarification because it says, "This agreement shall be in effect from the effective date for a period to extend through December 31st, 2026. Thereafter, this agreement shall automatically renew for a successive one-year period unless terminated by either party upon a 60-day written notice." So with that language, it seems like after 2026, it renews. If that's, shouldn't be there, then we can just go without that. But with the, that provision in there, it does extend every year, year after 2026.
Yeah, well, let me just say this, so Mr. Barron's been working with my assistant, William Pott, who we referred to earlier. I would suggest this, because I don't have a copy of the agreement with me, it's not in the packet, of course. I think there's enough here that we need to pull this, unless you all need this, you need this now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I mean, we'll work to get it cleared up, but you brought up a point that we need to get, we need to work with them on removing, if we don't want to renew it past 2026.
Right, because we don't have any pricing information from them after that year.
That's right, 2026 was the last one, but as you read through there, the first three years don't really have an increase, and then after that, the next three years do, and they use the producer's price index as those, as those escalators, so.
Okay.
And we do have the way out at any, at any moment, it was 30 days written notice.
Okay, would staff be comfortable if we approved the agreement with that section removed, the automatic after 2026?
You don't even have to do that because we've, we've taken the note. The, the item, as you'll see on there, is for me to be able to authorize me to finalize and execute, and so we will take that feedback and make that modification.
Okay, so that'll be done? Okay. That's all I have, thank you. With that, unless there's anybody else from council have anything, since I pulled it, I'll go ahead and move to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the agreement with Calgon Carbon Corporation with that amendment and to authorize the purchase as outlined.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, rise hand, raise your right hand, please. Thank you, it is passed. Four B, and Shelley, maybe we should read this in so we're a little clearer on what we're doing there.
Administrative Services Contract Between City of Kerrville and City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation.
All right, Roman, I believe was this, no, this one was not yours. We have a citizen?
I do have something afterwards, though.
Okay.
Do I just talk?
Mr. Broody, is this yours?
Yeah, it is. Okay, so George Broody, 16, 16 Glen wrote, "I'm just kind of renewing the similar, I think it's a misunderstanding in how people are viewing EIC. It is not a project developer. It is nothing more than a bank. It's a funding source for project developers." And we include in this contract between the city and EIC administrative costs that EIC is paying to the city. Yes, I understand that EIC has approved this, however, the title of the section is Engineering and Project Management Services, which EIC does none of. They fund project developers. So when you look at the paragraph that is describing, it's describing project management services that are not rendered from the city to EIC. They're rendered by whoever the applicant is for their funding. So that, that money, that service, should be paid in any funding agreement that EIC agrees to with that developer. And we keep putting it in the administrative costs, which it doesn't belong there. And I would encourage you to remove that out. It has been showing up as about 100,000 towards engineering services from EIC to the city's engineering department. I believe it doesn't belong there. It should be in, like I say, project funding agreements. Thanks.
Thank you.
Roman, did you have something to add?
For, it was actually something similar to that, actually. Can I, does, is there a staff that's able to respond to that?
I'll respond to that. We've answered that question a number of times. Again, this is a, there's a number of roles that are played within that engineering department. They're not doing engineering directly. However, they are providing project reports, they are doing tracking, they are working directly with these that are in direct connection to questions often that EIC has and wanting to be able to continue to monitor the progress of those projects. And so they are paying for staff time in regards to staff members that are tracking along on those projects that oftentimes are outside of city projects and so. But for EIC wanting and desiring for those staff members to be utilizing that staff time, we wouldn't be doing it otherwise.
Okay, so is there, does that, that falls outside of the scope of, well, let me ask this question first. What is the amount that they pay, EIC pays to the city for those engineering and project management services?
It's overall, it's a lump sum. You know, we went through an analysis several years ago on really trying to identify, and again, it ebbs and flows, and it's going to depend on the projects on a, on a typical annual basis of different pieces. But remember, again, we do financial services for EIC, we do administrative services, we do project tracking and reporting, which is really that primary function that we tried to identify there. It's a tremendous value, and EIC has continued to believe there's a tremendous value, and that's why they've continued to fund that piece.
Do we, do we have a number to go with that?
We'd be happy to pull the full analysis and bring it back to council if that's something that council desires to do.
Well, and I would say that the EIC didn't have any member on EIC that had any objection to that number, that felt that it was unreasonable or questioned it for any reason. And as a member of EIC, I feel that that number represents the services that are provided. And I don't, I don't know that, I need personally cost, cost break analysis on that because it's going to change from minute to minute, day to day, year to year, and it'd take more time to track it. But if, if, you know, if EIC had, had expressed, members had expressed concerns, or if it didn't seem in line with what we had been doing in the city, then I would agree with that statement.
The direction I was going with this is page one, section A, title, Engineering and Project Management Services, but comparing the last year's administrative services contract with this one, the actual paragraph in the section A has changed, and it no longer reads that the city agrees to provide engineering and project management services, just says project management services. So are we no longer providing that engineering aspect to it? You know, so does the title need to change to what?
But it does go on to mention engineering, design, and the process.
That, those paragraphs have always been there, that stayed the same. I'm just talking about the portion that changed, that used to say, "City agrees to provide engineering and project management services," and it always said, "City made contract for engineering, project management, yada, yada, that may be necessary." That's always been there. I'm looking at last year's on, right here on the document. So from last year's to this year, that was struck, and it's no longer says engineering. So my question is, are we no longer providing those services to them? Because it's not...
Again, we weren't providing engineering to begin with, and so this is, that was changed specifically to address these comments and concerns in regards to trying to clarify that we're not directly providing engineering services. However, we have an engineering department that is providing coordination, oversight of internal and external engineering for those projects oftentimes, particularly the elements that do have public infrastructure components.
Okay, so although the EIC is paying directly to the engineering department, because that's, I've...
They're providing an overall administrative services contract to the city for a number of different services. Some of what is included are, are engineering department staff that oftentimes is providing project management and coordination and oversight of internal and external engineering.
Okay, and I guess my last question then is going to be on the increased price for compensations now at $200,000. Think two years ago is 185, last year it was 195. What's the reason for the consistent increase?
Yeah, we, for a number of years, you may recall, that, that, this level, it was not, there was not any increase, and so we saw a pretty big discrepancy between actual costs and what was previously done. And so we've had over the last three or four years, we did take one break during the pandemic, but we've had just as a $5,000 escalator basically for COLA and other elements, just on increase of service costs.
Okay, so the COLA increases that we do are also coming from the EIC funds, and I didn't know that.
No, again, it's just that we, we had a slight escalator in there of about 5,000 per year over the last three or four years. So it's moved up from 185, 195. This year it's budgeted at 200,000. Been our practice over the last several years is to increase that by about $5,000.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments from anyone?
Well, from the new person, the, the contract is between the city and EIC to fund administrative services, correct?
Correct.
And the, yes, I don't even see that the mayor signs this contract. This is a contract between that board and, and the city's, city government. So they've already negotiated this? I mean, when y'all presented this contract to them, there was, was there a negotiation? Did they just say, "Sounds fair," or what, how'd that go?
I was on the, that's what I was speaking to earlier.
So...
That was exactly what happened. It was presented, and there was no rebuttal to that. It seemed, it seemed to be in line with what the, with what everyone that was the commissioner there, there was no comment, no objection.
Okay, I, thank you for, thank you for clarifying.
Are you okay, Joe, with that? Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Yes, I've moved that we approve the administrative services contract between the City of Kerrville and the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation.
I'll second that. Second, do we, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we have four opposed, one.
There's a comment, it just doesn't seem the proper type of agreement in the provisions that are in it. It's not that I'm against providing administrative services, it's just that portion.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
After we take a vote, is it appropriate for us to continue to comment on it?
We really should do it before. All right, we've taken care of four B. Four C?
Economic Development Grant Agreement between Kerr Economic Development Corporation and the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation. And this was pulled by citizen George Broody.
You can pass. You can, you can go for it, but I don't need to pull it.
You're not, don't need to talk?
Yeah, you guys said enough on the last one.
All right. Counsel, do any of you have anything, any comments, questions?
I have some comment. This one, as part of our packet, we received several different things, one of which was a draft strategic plan. Is there a final version of that strategic plan?
There will be a final version of that strategic plan. It is, but it won't be here until December. So the KEDC Board has contracted with a company, working with Mr. Salinas and his staff, to work towards that three-year strategic plan. We had a roundtable discussion, several members of council and K-Pub, Kirk County Board were there to come up with that draft outline, but the timeline for the completion of that final document is set for December of this year, so.
But we have a draft of a plan that not even going to be operational till the end of the year. So why do we have it? I'm not, I'm just wondering, why do we have it?
So back for a three-year renewal for funding for KEDC through EIC.
Gotcha.
The last agreement had a two-year roadmap, as it were. We knew that we were, we needed to get this done because it's budget time for everybody, and that we weren't going to be able to have a full document for the three-year plan because, again, they're not going to be done till December. So we wanted to bring at least some of that information to include into that, and then to include that full three-year strategic plan at a later date when it's completed and approved by everybody.
Will we be able to see that document at that time?
Absolutely, yes, sir. It'll have to be, it'll go through EIC and through...
Yeah, well, both, it'll come back through, certainly Gil could speak this if y'all desire, but they desire to bring it in front of all of their funding boards in that fall timeframe. In addition, obviously, the KEDC Board, which you have representatives that sit on that board, so.
All right, Mr. Salinas, would you like to say a word?
Mayor, members of City Council, so that plan is going to be November, December timeframe. Next month, Tip Strategies, which is a consultant that's working on that, is going to be making a presentation to the KEDC Board, and at that point in time, the Board's going to have some feedback and suggestions. And then in the next two months, they'll be taking that, crunching that data. So again, November, December timeframes when the final one will be available, and you as a council, as being one of the five stakeholder groups, will have access to that before then as well.
Not, no disrespect, but why do we have it? If we're asked to act on this contract, why do we have a draft version?
Timing is as such where we started in June of this year, and these are usually, they go four to six months as far as putting them together, even then fast-tracking it. And these are usually, they go four to six months as far as putting them together, even then fast-tracking it. We just did not want to come in for an ask with nothing in there. So that's why there's a summary draft, which is going to be very similar to what, you know, the, the final one would look like.
Thank you.
But as far as the amount of money, that, that stays the same?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. All right. Joe, are you comfortable?
I have a question for EA.
Okay.
The parties to this agreement are the city and the KEDC, but not the EIC in any way. The EIC is a funder of the agreement, isn't it?
You, correct. You have two different agreements, both very similar. Four C is between the KEDC and the EIC. You also have an agreement on your agenda for D, and that is a funding agreement, I'm sorry, between EIC, no, the city and KEDC. So the two different ones, they're very similar in the language that has been drafted and it's in your agenda.
Thank you.
But again, city council has to approve all funding agreements of the EIC. And so that's why that's on your agenda tonight.
Comfortable? Anyone else? Roman?
So looking at that section that we're looking about, the strategic plan summary outline, it says that they will, you will, KEDC will conduct your economic development pursuit as specified in the draft strategic plan summary outline and findings. It, nowhere in here does it say as amended or as maybe, you know, approved at a later time. So staff, will we need to come back and after they have a completed one, amend this agreement? Because even if something does change, they're having to comply with this one as it's stated. It is, it says here dated July 15, 2022. So what's the plan for that?
I think there's, there really, as we come to the fall with the full-blown work plan, it'll be, there'll be a confirmation from all of the funding entities, or at least this one, obviously, and EIC in regards to their, their work plan.
So with the agreement as it is, assuming we approve this, it says that they will use the draft plan as dated July 15, 2022. Even if there is a general agreement verbally or in person, again, without disrespect, but I think we can agree that that doesn't pass the legal standards of having to, you know, hold legally. So we would need to come back at a later time and amend that. And I assume at that time, council would be able to, we would have the opportunity to review that strategic plan to.
So the next sentence in there, the next one deals with the three-year strategic agreement we're talking about. That their, their plan is to have that agreement done by December of this year. That's the three-year agreement we're talking about. Did you see that?
I'm reading it. I see it.
In addition, in fulfilling its obligations under this agreement, they will comply with a three-year 2023 to 2025 strategic plan scheduled for review and approval by KEDC on or before December 31 of this year.
That kind of overrides that draft element?
Well, the strategic plan is.
Because I know that three-year strategic plan is kind of the final version. This draft summary of the plan is kind of what we have right now. So my question is, with that second sentence in there, does that override the draft portion of it? Getting a nod from our city attorney?
You know, I'll say this, we'll, we'll have to look at the, their next plan. But I, I think I'm comfortable right now saying, I don't, based on this language, I don't think we have to do any amendment. But we'll, of course, review it. And if it's, you know, significant changes and, and if we think it'd be clear, then we'll just have you, at, at that time that you review it, we'll just have you amend the agreement to make sure we're clear.
Okay.
Again, no disrespect to you. I got your email today. Thank you. We haven't actually visited. And I think you're doing a good job. I'm, I'm proud of the work that your group is doing. I just, it's new to me. There's lots of agreements here. And I guess I'm just not used to seeing a draft attached to a contract.
And a couple of things, one there is along the lines of the contract and what have you. Everything that we're doing is in total alignment with the 2050 plan. And the consultants know that, as well as our stakeholder groups. For this, in this case, the timing was as such that June, we had, we're going to have fresh faces as far as our different stakeholder groups. So that's why we said, okay, that's when we'll, we'll start our strategic planning. But that being said, it pushes us out to, towards the end of the, the year.
Okay. Everyone comfortable? As comfortable as they can be?
And be confused at the same time.
And this is confusing. There, there are a lot of things all together here. All right. At this time, do we have a motion to accept?
I move that we approve the Economic Development Grant Agreement between KEDC and the city of Kerrville, Texas.
Second.
And do you want to add Econo, EIC?
Is this, is the EIC, yes.
Okay. Do you want, say that one more time, so we're clear.
Okay. I move that we approve the Economic Development Grant Agreement between KEDC and the city of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation, EIC.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Everyone in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one last one, four D.
City of Kerrville, funding agreement with Kerr Economic Development Corporation, and this was pulled by Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Just one thing, page two of the agreement. Yes, I thought this is where Councilman Raharang was going with this. When he asked whether this is between the city and EIC or the city, or KEDC and the city or KEDC and EIC. Page two, subsection E talks about EIC. That may just be like a copy and paste thing, or I'm not sure if there is any element of EIC in this. If not, I think that just needs to be striked.
That needs to be changed. That's correct. So if you'll prove it subject to that change, we'll.
That's all I got. So with that, then I'll move to, does everyone, council understand that? Okay. With that, I'll move to approve the funding agreement with the KEDC and the city of Kerrville with the amendment on page two, striking subsection E.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, we have moved through the consented, the, the consent agenda, yes. All right, we are ready for five A. And Shelley, will you read us in, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance number 2022-25. An ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Kerrville, Texas fiscal year 2023, providing appropriations for each city department and fund, containing a cumulative clause and containing a savings and severability clause. We do have one citizen speaker signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. How were you guys tonight? So you have a lot of paper in front of you. Apologize for that. As you know, we participated in a negotiated bond pricing today, which was exciting. So we were working for several hours to get these presentations updated out of that information. So ordinarily, I wouldn't pile that much information on you on paper. So I'm not going to do an in-depth overview of the budget since we've already done that. But I thought I would just give a high-level summary. And that way, if we had any questions that we hadn't already answered, we could do that. So. So just as a review, both of our major funds, general fund and water fund are balanced. So general fund with 35.3 million in revenue expenses and the water fund at 14.7 million in revenue and expenses. Increases, as we've talked about, primarily due to personnel, particularly in public safety, as we've talked about, adjustments in step plans, increase in cost of supplies, obviously heavily driven by fuel and all the other things that we're seeing inflationary. And then, of course, an increased transfer to asset replacement. Other funds, as outlined in the budget document, 21 million in revenues and 49 million in expenses. And most time that throws some people when you see that reverse number. So keep in mind that most of the time, big projects are multi-year projects. So we'll receive revenue in one year, but the expense actually happens in another year. And that's the reason for this, the net difference there. The other thing to know is that citywide transfers are actually accounted for as a revenue in one fund and an expense in another, although that's just an accounting mechanism. So there's not actually cash moving. So that's why I have the net number there, so you can see what the actual cash number is. Okay, just a couple of quick updates. So property tax and sales tax make up roughly 50% of the budget. About 25 million services, which are going to be water, sewer, EMS, solid waste, that's the landfill side. So I'm sure you know that we contract with Republic Services for our curbside pickup. So that's a pass-through cost. That's not actually a revenue for the city. That's a pass-through contract with Republic Services. Recreation, that includes golf fee-based programs that are part of parks. That makes up 28.2, so about 19.7 million of the revenues. Looking at this as a total, again, the net of inter-fund transfers there, 9.1 million in inter-fund transfers, so actual cash is 61 million. The general fund and water fund, 71.3% of the total revenue. And those two funds are balanced, as we talked about earlier. Looking at expenses, so 99.1 million, again, 90.1 when you net the inter-fund transfers. General fund and water fund account for 78.3% of the spending, just like on the revenue side. And I did add some numbers in there just so you could see how those numbers, those percentages calculate out to dollars there. On the expenditure by category, so personnel, as we continue to talk about, is our largest expense at 30.8. It's about 30.1 million, 15.6 million of that related to public safety. So 52% of the overall personnel budget citywide. And also, as we've talked about before, you know, other supporting departments that aren't necessarily budgeted to go to public safety. They're not calculated in there. So there are bigger pieces of that that we're just not, not accounting for. Interesting fact, I put down here in the bottom for you. So total public safety budget proposed for 23, 18.7 million dollars. So that exceeds the total of our general fund property tax and EMS revenues by 3.2 million. So.
And it looks like capital is up over, over personnel.
Right. So capital is up, and so that's related to the public safety facility expense that we expect to see in 2023. And that could vary just depending on the progress of that project, of course. And remember, we got, we're going to be getting the revenue for that this year. So we'll be a little upside down on the revenues and expenses. Okay, just a couple of quick key priorities here. We've been over these before. Public safety implementation, continuing to focus on public safety through equipment and labor, and then other workforce areas as well. Increasing that transfer to asset replacement so that we can make sure we're addressing any aging asset needs that we have. Continuing to increase street maintenance funding. And all these things kind of line up with 2050. As we talk through these, one of the things that I wanted to point out was implementation of grant-funded projects. So it does take a lot of time, but city staff this past year has done a lot of work to go out and source outside grants in order to fund some of these larger assets. So as of now, we actually have awards for 6.3 million dollars with a matching component of just slightly over a million. So most of the money for some of our bigger projects, body cameras, the CDBG, so the pedestrian improvements, both in the downtown area and then also in Catalyst Area Two, are both partial, majority grant-funded. And then the big one would be the generator that we have coming up. We'll be bringing that back to you as we find out more on when our actual award will come in through FEMA. But that one is close to $5 million. So we're still working out there to source some other revenues so that we're being able to take care of some of that capital need. So I'll take any questions that you have. This action does require two motions, as Mr. Hayes has lined out for us, so that we get that language right. But happy to take any questions.
Counsel, anything for Julie?
Some praise for the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a long process. We thank your support. We're happy to be here with this, at this point.
There, there's a lot in here, but, so I, I'm not going to be able to go into a lot. But one thing that was general, we've got additional pages for our budget book in terms of the revenues per department that, I guess, generate revenue. What I noticed, though, is taking, I guess, one of the first ones, city secretary's office, not trying to pick on you for any reason, but just taking city secretary's office, we didn't get a page for them in terms of revenue.
So I looked at the, because we didn't include it in that kind of detail in the proposed book, and that is a lot of work to go and net that out, to be able to allocate general resources to those that don't generate revenue or that generate a really small amount of revenue. Just to get you some information before the final book comes out, I looked at the larger departments because that took several hours of work just to generate that. So that, what I did was kind of said, all right, which departments generated the bulk of the general fund revenue? And let's break those down in detail. So that's, that's why you didn't get, because there's a lot of other departments that have some revenue attached to it, but it's really small in the grand scheme of things. So that's why.
Okay.
Because the city secretary, for example, you know, some notary funds, maybe, some copies, some public information requests, fees and things like that. But it's a very small portion. If you look at the fee schedule, very small.
Okay. So, and was that just for the proposed budget, or will that be in there in the final?
It will be in there in the final, just from your request. So every department will have allocated resources so that you see a net zero on every department. But to do that, we have to go through and allocate a portion of that funding to every department. So that's, I mean, it's a page for every department. So that, that's going to take some work. But for the final book, it'll be in there in more detail. But I wanted to at least get you guys the larger revenue sources so you could see kind of how the big-ticket guys broke out as far as contributors.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? All right, we have two motions required. I'll make a motion.
Speaker?
Speakers.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You're right. This is a public hearing. Okay, at 5:46, 6:46, we will open the public hearing.
Peggy McKay. Peggy McKay, Kerrville. I'm back for the street use fund. And this year, it looks like it's going to be just short of $600,000 taken from the water fund and put toward street repair. I'm not comfortable removing that much money from our water fund after I listen to that long-range water plan. There's so many needs there. And I, I hope that we rethink the street use fund and leave our money for the water department. And that perhaps would help with the, the rate increases that we've had of late. And secondly, the excess in the sales tax. It must have been in a workshop where they were talking about the frozen funds. And Kim, you had mentioned, you had asked a question about it because you were surprised at the amount. I couldn't find it. I couldn't find a video of the workshop. But it, I got the impression, and it's not the first time, that the impression is the 65-plus is responsible for all the frozen funds. When actually, where I could only get the largest or the greatest amount of information was for 2021. And the over-65 group was only responsible for 10.7% of the total frozen funds in 2021. So when you look at the other four groups that have frozen funds, like Homestead and the, the veterans and handicap, 10% is what is attributed to the over-65. So I just wanted to make sure that people don't think that we over-65 are responsible for all the shortages or the funds held back in that fund. And then another thing too was the, the excess sales tax. I didn't quite hear, but I think it was mentioned that the excess sales tax were greater than were anticipated. And so that covered the 5% merit increase. And I'm not sure if I'm right on that. But when that happens, is this sales tax from the previous year that's in excess and applied to an, an account in the following year? How, how is that handled? Is it like an off, off-record?
Julie?
We're all wrapped up with comments. We'll, we'll.
Do you have any more?
Thank you. That was it. Thank you. Oh, and, and when I make my comments, I, my intent is not to be critical. But if I don't say anything, you'll think that I agree with everything. And I do a lot, and particularly when Julie said there's a plan B because of the uncertainty with inflation coming up. I really appreciate that because it's looking dire every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McKay. Thank you, Mrs. McKay.
Is there another speaker?
Is there another speaker?
There's not another speaker signed up, however, it is a public hearing.
So, George?
So, George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. So Mr. Garcia already talked about, one, that revenue is missing from the budget. I understand it's a lot more work, but it, it's always been there, and it's helpful. Two big things that we look, that I look for. That EIC breakdown that we were talking about before, put, shows you the 95, 100,000 that's going into engineer department. The other is the water fund transfer gets broken down, so we see that. And it's helpful to see where that's coming from, and where it's essentially how it's calculated. So that, that's kind of a general comment. The other is a kind of a I told you so thing. The tax revenue increase, you know, I was talking about it when we were doing the public safety thing, suggesting that it would be about a 20% or, or so increase. Turns out, it's 19%. And that's not even calculating in the full amount of a full year of debt service for that public safety complex. So that's kind of interesting to see. There's a couple of trends. One is increasing portion of the general fund budget that's being funded by debt. When debt isn't really a revenue, it's actually a deferred expense. It's just a holding place. So we're essentially deferring more of our budget expense. We're also increasing our, the gap between revenue and expenses increasing, which is why we're getting the, the tax increase. Taxes are just a gap funding. That's all that is. And the gap is widening. So it's just something to consider. I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying it's something to look at. That mid-year salary bump that Ms. McKay was talking about, I talked about it before, it was a, it was a ongoing expense that was funded by, I thought it was actually COVID funding that was being used for the bulk of it. But either way, it was a one-time bump that we use for ongoing expense, which is another kind of dangerous thing to do. And then the last two things are kind of bigger deals. One is the, the water rate hike. There's a couple of things in the budget that talk about water fund debt. One of them is the amount of debt that's individual projects that have showed up. We got a 2016 debt, which is for the reuse pond, infrastructure for reuse system. The K-Pub loan, which kicks in to principal and interest being paid this year, which is the main reason your debt's jumping a million, just in this year alone. It's not jumping, you're losing some, but you're picking up a million new dollars of debt in the K-Pub loan. That is not as it lists as. It listed in the budget book as water wastewater system improvements. It wasn't. It was the reuse pond. The contract with K-Pub explicitly stated that that funds could only be used for the reuse pond. So essentially, you have a reuse system, delivery system, that's requiring 1.8 million dollars worth of debt this year, this year alone. And yet, the reuse system revenue is 155,000. So that class of customers is underpaying for their cost of services, and the potable system is overpaying for theirs. And I, I direct you to a, it's a comment in the financial management policy that we have, says user fees, particularly utility rates, should identify the relative costs of serving different classes of customers. A reuse customer is a separate mutually exclusive class of customer from the potable wastewater, or sewer, water and sewer customer. They should not be paying for each other's cost of service. So you need to review that. The other is, last thing, I got much? No, I don't. I'll, I'll talk to you about it later, the streets.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Broody.
All right. Are there any other speakers during this time? All right, at 6:54, we will close the public hearing. And Julie?
I'll just give a couple, a couple responses, and if you have any questions to follow up, I'm happy to answer those. So as far as excess sales tax, I'm assuming, I think the question was, was it prior year or current year? So regarding the cost of living increase that happened in fiscal year '22, that was actually fiscal year '22 money. So as we go along each month, I look at multiple years of data and kind of develop a trend as far as what's happening with sales tax. And so when we get to the point that we could clearly see that we were going to exceed our revenues in sales tax, is when that was brought back to council for amending that revenue budget. And with that is what paid for majority of that cost of living increase, if, if that was the right question. Because essentially, at the end of the year, all general fund revenues are rolled up into general fund revenue. So there's really not a departmental assignment, just because of the way that governmental accounting works. So it's one fund, all those resources go to that fund, and then are allocated out, you know, based on the budgetary process. So if we have excess at the end of the year, for example, then we would bring that back to you in the form of a budget amendment for the prior year's budget. So I don't know if that answered the question exactly. So we just continue to track that and make sure that we were able to cover that before that was proposed to you back in February for that April adjustment. We want to obviously make clear that we're not trying to in any way say that people who are 65 and over are creating a hardship. I'm not going to confirm or not on the 10%. I would have to check that. I would probably argue that it's much higher than that. However, I can get that number and provide that to you. Because it is lumped in as a total, which you do have some homestead and those other kinds of freezes and caps in there. So there are some variations, but it, there is a large amount of frozen related to over 65. What that is, I can't speak to. And then also, so revenues aren't missing from the budget. So just for clarification, they are in there in detail by line item, by fund. So the decision was made, and it, and it was my decision, really, just for simplicity, to put them together by category, so that you can see them, how they line up in your budget, but by category. It's not a major ask for us to put them in there in a different way. And so that's why we've given you the rough draft for right now, so that you can see what was in proposed for the big ticket numbers. And then, of course, we'll bring those back, because a lot of departments have zero. So all you're going to see is excess from general resources, to be able to make sure that they have a balanced budget within their department. Does that make sense?
All right. Counsel, any further questions?
Can you speak to the reuse and potable?
I cannot. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll provide some general comments. We've, we've gone over this a number of times as that project went through. Not looking to necessarily re-litigate it tonight, but, you know, essentially, we've always continued, and this year was a great example, as we've gone through the drought, our customer use in the last drought was over, overall municipality demand was over six and a half million gallons. This summer, we've been averaging less than 5 million gallons. And so as we stated before, a big part of that is, is being able to have now diverted a lot of that potable irrigate, the potable water going for irrigation purposes. We're seeing between a million and a half and 2 million gallons of water that's not having to be processed, it's not having to go through treatment, and it's not having to go through the more rigorous elements, and then irresponsibly put onto, you know, irrigation type surfaces. And so it's really a water supply component, if you want to look at it that way, within our overall plan. And so it very much, it, it has never been contemplated to be a full cost recovery from that small user base, when in fact, the entire water system benefits by not having to get additional water supply for potable resource, and then also being able to more responsibly utilize that. Does that answer that question?
Somewhat. So then going to the citizens' question, does that mean that, or I guess a response to the fact that, or potable is overpaying and reuse is underpaying? They're overpaying in terms of the cost for compensating for the underpaying that they're doing?
I, I guess what I would say is that there, there is a cost to the overall water system for infrastructure improvements that have provided a greater water supply. In addition, the community has not had to go out and get additional potable water supply, because we've been, been able to allocate a reuse supply that is now being utilized for irrigation surfaces, rather than being, putting potable water on there. So there, there absolutely is a net benefit to the overall water system and the overall water customer, and they pay a part of that as, as part of the holistic system.
I can say.
That's not going to be cost recovered by the reuse customer. And philosophically, maybe shouldn't be cost recovered by the reuse customer.
And I can say to EA's point about consumption, we did some math last year, it was over 220 million gallons that came out of reuse for irrigation that would have been potable had we not had that source. That, that fact I can give.
Mm-hmm. Speaks for itself. All right. Counsel, anyone else? Brenda? Comments? Questions? Joe? Kim? And Roman, anything else? All right. As I started to say a minute ago, we have two motions that are required. And do I have some? And the first one, we will need a roll call on. The second one, we do not need a roll call for. So do I have someone prepared for motion number one? I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-25 to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year 2023 on first reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Shelley, would you like to do the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Mayor Eitner?
Yes.
Councilmember Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I'll move that we ratify the vote to adopt the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes in the previous fiscal year.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that part. And we will move to 5B. And you are still on?
I'm still on.
Ordinance number 2022-26, an ordinance levying an ad valorem tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas, for fiscal year 2023. Apportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing other taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. So talk about the tax rate just for a moment. As I said earlier, the bond sale was very exciting, watching the pricing come in today and all of the offers. What I would say is that we, the bond was oversubscribed, so obviously, we went out to sell 45 million dollars, and the orders came in over 111 million. So I think that says a lot for people's confidence in the city. So Hilltop was able to work through all of those processes that they needed to with the underwriters to get us finalized, and, and we'll be bringing you that ordinance here shortly. But the good news is, after they negotiated, we were actually able to save a little bit of money. So we had originally proposed a tax rate to you for debt of 1411, and now we are proposing a rate of 1409. So about $100,000 in overall savings from that negotiation. So before I went into the tax rate, I wanted to say that, because it's going to make a little bit of a change on your overall. So we'd originally proposed in the budget, 5752 on an overall. So we're proposing now a 5750. Went from basically a 12.9% increase to a 12 point, I'm sorry, 12.94 to a 12.90. So just obviously because of our debt, primarily moving from 0.735 to the 1409, which was previously estimated at 1411. So all related, again, to those voter approved bonds. Just a little bit of information, as we did on the budget, this again, just is the impact to the public safety bond to homeowners. And so we all know that appraisals went up, so the average did change a little bit. So I've highlighted the new average overall, went from 250 to 300 for property values from Kirk had's valuations this past year. So this just kind of gives you a little bit of a look at what the impact is going to be at each valuation related to that new debt. And this, you've seen before, so new taxable value, right about 35 million. And that is new structures, or, you know, extreme modifications to things that weren't previously on the tax roll. So about $199,000 in revenue from those new properties. And you can see the percentage there broken down by category, as far as what that new value consisted of. Again, this is your frozen information, and this is exactly what we presented when we did the budget presentation. So you can see that it's talking about overall frozen properties. So looking at fiscal year '23, had we been able to collect revenue and all that, that's why we give you that number, just so you can get an idea of what the impact is there. So 30% of our properties do have a freeze at one time, one or another. And again, this is exactly the same.
This is, this is not, this is not a result of, of all exemptions. This is strictly related to.
Freeze. That is correct.
Tax dealing only.
That's correct. There are other exemptions that do go into this. And again, I can bring you that information back.
No, I just wanted to be clear, because I wanted to make sure.
That is correct. Right. There are other things that do cap valuations or taxable, you know, net taxable value that do impact that, that's not necessarily classified as a froze, as a frozen. So that's really all I have on the property tax rate. If you have any questions, or there are any speakers, we do have, again, a very legal motion that has to be assessed.
All right. At 7:06, we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up? Shelley, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Yeah, just one quick comment. This is a good one. You guys can relax. It's George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. I just want to say that, so I, looking at the budget, I discovered something in the tax rate calculation form, and Ms. Behrens was really generous with her time to try and get that corrected, and we did, and it's in there. And I, I just really appreciated the time that she put, she put into that. So thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Broody.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? At 7:06, we will close the public hearing. And again, we have two, no, let's see, we have two motions. Am I correct? Just one, just one. And this one does call for a roll call. So do I have someone with the motion? Anyone wanting to make the motion?
I'll make it. Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-26 and an amendment, and that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.5750, which is effectively a 12.90% increase in the tax rate.
All right. Do we have a second? Thank you. And Shelley, are you prepared for a roll call?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Councilmember Herring?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hughes?
All right. Thank you all. And I think we can be thankful for just a little bit lower tax rate. Not much, but a little. All right. We are ready for 5B. Shelley, if you will read that in for us.
Ordinance number 2022-27, this is an ordinance approving the issuance of the voter approved general obligation bonds. An ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of the amount of money and aggregate principal amount of City of Kerrville, Texas, general obligation bond series 2022.
6A.
Making provisions for the payment of interest thereon and principal thereof, approving and authorizing the execution of all instruments and procedures related thereto, including a paying agent, registrar agreement, a purchase contract, and an official statement and declaring an effective date. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
And I have a correction. This is 6A, not 5B, actually.
Yes, ma'am, 6A.
Thank you.
I do have an ordinance for you tonight, however, Ann Berger with Hilltop, who's our financial advisor and has held our hand through this process for the last several months, is here to give you a short presentation on the negotiated pricing today. And also, a member of our bond counsel, Jay Juarez, is here. So if anyone has any questions, I put an official statement at your place. Remember, we just finished that today, as we wrapped up the final negotiations for that. So I'll let Ann present, answer questions, and then again, Jay is here also, and then we'll discuss the ordinance.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Honorable mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to be back in Kerrville. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Before we actually jump into the results of the bond sale, as you may recall from our timetable of events, there are multiple different steps when we issue bonds. We have the creation of the disclosure document. We go through the rating agency process. We work very closely in coordinating the tax rate and the debt service structure. So I wanted to spend just a moment to talk about our process with standard imports. So So we send them multiple documents and they come back and they prepare an exhaustive list of questions. And then we schedule a conference call to go over it with them. And I really wanted to take this opportunity to commend your staff for the amount of time that it takes to go through. And unlike a lot of other entities, your staff provides written responses in advance of the call, uh, all the documents that are requested in advance of the call. And even the rating analyst was very complimentary and said, this helps us so much. It allows us to really listen to the conversation because then we can go back to the specific notes and get the details that we need. And just, um, just wanted to highlight that. In addition to, I wanted to highlight for you some of the comments that were in the rating report. So when they talk about the key credit matrix that they include, strong budgetary performance, strong budget, strong, very strong budget flexibility, very strong liquidity, very strong management, and a strong institutional framework. In the upper right-hand corner, that I took a, uh, quote from him that said, growing property tax revenue, which is the city's leading operating revenue source and strong financial management policies and practices that incorporate long-term planning and robust, robust budgetary assumptions, support stable operating performance. If you look at the particular quotes they talked about, you're supported by financial policies and practices and a growing tax base. They talked about improving income and property wealth, very strong reserves, uh, strong financial management. And what's interesting, if you go back for a number of years, the rating agencies really did not provide transparency about the four categories that they look at. Most fundamentally, they look at willingness and ability, and the ability is very straightforward. They have models, they put the data in, and it says, obviously Kerrville can pay this debt. But the willingness, they, they look and they look at trends relative to what's going on from a tax base, collection ratio, what's going on from, from the budget perspective and the financial performance. But when we drill down and they look at the four categories, they look at management governance, they look at the economy, they look at the overall finances, and they look at debt. And for many years, they were never transparent about how they weighed each of those. And ultimately, Standard and Poor's came out with a report called the Financial Management Assessment. And they said very clearly, the most important one that they weigh is governance and management. Because they said, if you have, just as they've talked about here, um, strong financial management policies and practices, well, with strong governance and strong management, they've said, you can weather a large capital improvement program and still keep the rest of the financial, uh, focus in place. If you end up going into some sort of a reduction in the economy or recession or economic hard times with embedded policies and financial practices and governance, you can weather that storm. And so I just felt like it was very important to highlight this particular one, the very strong governance and management is a key. Now, one of the other things I put in here, and when I give these presentations, a lot of times I don't put this in here. But for me, I put in, uh, this particular time upside scenario. And it's like, what do you need to do in order to get an upgrade? And it does talk about, um, looking at improved wealth and income levels to be in line with your peers. For me, what was more important about this is what it doesn't say. It doesn't say anything about what you need to do with your budget or your fund balance or your financials or your policies. To me, this says, all the things for which you have control over from a governance and management perspective are all in line with peers that are higher rated than you are. This is something relative to the economy for which you don't have control at this point in time. And I will tell you, your staff did an excellent job sending articles and supplementary information to help them better understand that maybe the, the, the standardized wealth level ratios truly do not reflect what is going on in Kerrville. So we really are working towards that. But I, I felt like this was such a great report and that the counsel and your staff should really be commended. They look not just at where you are now, they look at where you've been, they look at your budget going forward. And all of those are critical to the rating that you get, and your double A rating was reaffirmed.
Thank you for the good news.
Yes, ma'am. Very good news.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, looking at the specifics of the bond, the bid that we have for your consideration this evening is a rate of a four point oh eight percent. And I want to highlight, the actual par amount is forty-four million, four hundred thousand. But if you look in the upper left-hand corner, there is a line item called premium. And it's one million, forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And it is very common investors prefer to have a premium bond instead of a par bond. And the reason that they like that is, it's almost like for your investments, if you hear your staff talk about investments, the mark-to-market, where if rates go up or down, then it impacts, you know, the value of the investment. However, if you hold it to maturity, then there's no change. Well, investors in your bonds are the same way. These are fixed income securities and they prefer to have a premium bond so that if rates go up, they still are able to show that, um, it still is under what the current market rate is. So the most important part of that, which I'll talk about on the next page, is that your deposit to the project fund is the whole forty-five million dollars. So to highlight, uh, the projections from when I was before you on June twenty-eighth, we had projected back then a forty-five million in par. Today, it's forty-four point four for your consideration. We had projected that there would be about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in costs of issuance that would deduct from the par amount to your project fund. But because premium by law can be used to pay for costs of issuance and underwriters discount, you get the entire forty-five million project fund deposit. We had projected a four point two four interest rate, and the actual rate for your consideration is a four oh eight. So if we look at the total debt service, it's about one point one eight million less than what we had projected. We were also able to negotiate a one-year shorter call date. So these bonds are callable in nine years in thirty-one versus thirty-two. There was no additional cost in the yield or the coupons to get that, and that just gives you one more year of flexibility. And whereas before, we had projected through the election cycle and not to exceed of fourteen point eleven pennies. And as, uh, Julie mentioned, the rate for your consideration is the fourteen oh nine. One of the things, um, that we were able to do today, um, you're, there is, um, in our markets now, there is a electronic order entry platform called Game Day. And we worked with the underwriter to get that set up, and your staff had access to that. So during the order period from eight-thirty until ten o'clock, they could watch the orders coming in live. And there are multiple toggles in there. You can drill down on a particular maturity, you can drill down on a particular investor. It's, it's just tremendous information. And the best news is at the end, we get to download it into Excel and we get to save it, and it's, it's great historical information. Just as Julie mentioned, if you, if you look at this, this is a snapshot of what it looked like at the end of the order period. And as noted, you were oversubscribed today. Uh, you had over the, uh, hundred and ten million, I believe, in orders. And you can see that in certain maturities, the amount is over exactly what your amount of bonds were. So when that happens, we call that oversubscribed. So I then, just like you have underwriters, we have underwriters in our firm, but we don't underwrite and financial advise at the same time because that's a conflict. But one of our underwriters is assigned and works with me when we price Kerrville. So we talked about it, we looked at the book, we looked at the underlying orders, and we worked with the underwriter and agreed that a two basis point reduction in the yield and maturities twenty-four through twenty-six, as well as twenty forty and twenty forty-two through twenty forty-two was appropriate. We tried to push on one or two other maturities, but we did ask them to talk to the investors. And the investors were like, no, we need to hold at that. So we did try to push it as best as we can, and you got a two basis point reduction in six different maturities. So the other information that we pulled, uh, from Game Day are who are your investors? And, um, Credit Suisse Asset Management is one that you've probably heard of. Edward Jones Frost Bank, um, I highlight, um, we also had in there, uh, State Farm, which is a name that a lot of people know, Wells Fargo. The biggest one in the middle, in the middle is Millennium Fixed Income. And they turned in twenty-two million dollars in orders for your bonds. Those are really on the back end. One of the other things that we thought was really great, and I think again, it speaks to the reputation of the city of Kerrville, you had six percent of the orders are over six point two million are from individuals. Real, these are, these are not asset, these are not what we call separately managed accounts. These are real individuals who are buying the city of Kerrville's bonds. So these are people who, um, obviously believe enough in the city that they wanted to put you in their portfolio.
That's awesome.
And so just in summary, um, we absolutely recommend that the city consider the bid from FHN, Raymond James, and UBS. We believe, and we have performance, if you'd like to see it, we believe all three firms did an excellent job. We are talking about a true interest cost of four point oh eight, which is sixteen basis points less than the projection. The tax rate is able to be fourteen oh nine versus the fourteen eleven. Um, we, we, as I mentioned earlier, there are multiple steps that are going on simultaneously. And there is no way that we can bring this sort of a transaction and this sort of a result to you without the work of your staff. And they really are to be commended. And especially at this time of year, when you have budget going on and so many other things, uh, we would call and they would stop what they were doing, they would get us the information we needed. They would be available for the rating agency call, they would be available for the due diligence call. And it just takes an awful lot of time for things to come together like it has. And I just want the council to know that we are very grateful for your staff and all their work in helping to get this accomplished. Jay is here, as Julie introduced earlier. Want to make sure we recognize the work of bond counsel. They're a very critical, uh, team member on this transaction. The underwriters, as I said earlier, they did a really great job. Their performance was so strong with that many orders for your size transaction. Um, their underwriters' counsel was Lock Lord. And finally, before I turn it over for any questions, I just want to thank the city of Kerrville again. It is an honor to have served as your financial advisor and our long-term relationship, and we very much appreciate that. So happy to answer any questions, um, if you have any.
Counsel.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you and staff for, um, pushing this along and getting this done for us. It's been needed for a long time, and I just want to thank you.
Did I say thank you for everything?
This is such good news. It just, uh, has to make all of us feel very, very good. And, uh, thank you all for your help and another thank you to our staff. Such a great job. Kim, anything?
Awesome.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, this is not a public hearing, right Shelley?
Yes, ma'am. It's not a public hearing.
And so all we need to do is finish this off with a motion.
No one signed up to speak.
Somebody want to read that out? Mayor Protein.
Read the whole thing?
Yes.
You can just say approval of the ordinance.
I think I'll do that.
As presented.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Very gladly, that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. And again, thank you to all of you. And Ann, uh, have a good trip wherever you're headed back. All right. We are ready for seven A.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, second reading. An ordinance creating a planned development district zoning for light commercial uses and a standalone parking lot on an approximately one point four nine acre property consisting of Lot twenty-one R, Block G, BFK addition within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as eight twenty Sidney Baker and eight twenty-nine Clay Street, adopting a concept plan and conditions related to the development and use of said lot and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Thank you.
Drew.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. Just wanted to touch base, uh, this is second reading. Uh, from the first reading, we did talk about some of the conditions that came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, to limit the vehicular access to Clay Street, the screening on three sides of the property, and the solid waste collection bins are prohibited. Uh, those three things have been incorporated into the draft ordinance before you. I'd be pleased to answer any questions about the draft or the, the history of the case.
All right. Roman, anything for Drew?
Um, one of the things, I don't know if I asked at the last, at the first reading, how are we gonna enforce the do not enter, um, provision that is, does not allow them to enter from the Clay Street side onto then the Sidney Baker side?
It will be gated, um, based on emergency access only, so that'll have an emergency access gate. There won't, there won't be access from Clay Street.
And they, they're not exiting off, that's the purpose of that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then get to my other one. Well, the gate is required to be closed at all times?
Yes.
That's right? And something that I noticed after the meeting was that when I asked about the standalone parking lot, which I found the definition, it was, there's, I think, a, a response made that this is actually an accessory parking lot. So
It was replatted into one lot, um, identifying it as a standalone parking lot because we are separating the land use through the P D into two portions of the property. Um, and to be consistent with the, the history of the case.
Okay. Is there, what, is there like a problem with us naming it an accessory parking lot and going that direction?
No, I think the, with the ordinance, and I've got the site plan up here, you can see, uh, the ordinance references, the land use is on portion A and portion B separately. Um, the intent being portion B parking only. Whether we call it accessory parking or standalone parking, and the, the intent of the use would be the same.
Okay. Well, the reason why the, the difference matters, uh, in, in my perspective is looking at the definition in our zoning code. And if counsel are with me, it won't take too long, but an accessory, well, I'll go with the standalone first, since this is what we have. It's a parking surface used or intended to be used for the parking for which a fee may or may not be charged, that is located on a site that is independent of the use or the uses it serves. Specifically, not including parking lots located on the same premise as the principal use they serve. So a standalone parking lot specifically does not include a parking lot on the same premise. Now, the parking lot structure for, the definition for the accessory parking lot is a parking surface used or intended to be used for parking for which a fee or may, may or may not be charged, that is located on the same premise as the primary use being served. So I know we've divided the two uses up, and that's probably why we're using that different definition. But because they were platted and they are now one premise, it's really an accessory parking lot. So why aren't we just calling it that to make it simpler?
It, it's not, and it, and I'll just, you know, Mr. Paxton characterized it correctly. I also want to make clear that before you all vote, I recommend that you all, that I meet with you all in executive session on this issue.
Okay.
So I want to make sure that's clear.
Okay. Is that any further on my comment there about that, or?
Uh, again, I think it's, we, we've separated, through the planned development district, we've separated the two into two portions for the purposes of land use. And that's why we've defined it as a standalone parking lot versus accessory.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Or anyone? Okay. If, uh, the applicant is here, I, is, I believe.
Yes.
Yes. So
Well, the applicant's the city.
Pardon? Well, not the applicant, but
We've got two speakers signed up, mayor.
That's right. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. Uh, at this time, we will open the public hearing.
On public hearing. We have two speakers signed up on the engine item.
Okay.
Patrick Cahoon?
My name is Patrick Cahoon. I'm at one seven nine South Main in Bernie, Texas. Have the pleasure of representing R B M, the owner of the property, subject to the P D D. As you may know, Mr. and Mrs. Mutterall, who are principals of that organization. You may also know that they've had the location on Sidney Baker there for some twenty years. And about five years ago, uh, the tenants needed extra parking. So as a responsible landlord, R B M reached out, purchased the neighboring property, understanding that the law would permit him to put in a parking lot, uh, so that he could serve his tenants. And that need still exists. In fact, the, the facility remains In fact, the, the facility remains unable to serve or to be filled up with tenants because there's not enough parking. And so, here we are, five years later, Mr. Mutterall is still trying to get that accomplished. The, the process started with, with applications to the city and a premise that the parking was permitted. The city and city staff didn't agree with that. Ultimately, had, the court had to get involved, and the court did agree with that. And so, so after that court judgment was issued, we spent in excess of a year working with the city to come up with a solution that would be palatable to the city. I personally worked with the city council, or city staff, city attorney, and outside house, outside counsel for the city to accomplish this goal. Now, there's under 211 of the local government code. Typically, we want uniformity and properties that are neighboring one another. There are exceptions for PDDs like this, where landowners can come together with the city and solve problems. Well, that's certainly what we have here. And there was a collaborative effort to solve this problem. And that yielded the PDD that was provided to planning and zoning. Now, that's not what we have before today. That was not what was agreed to. And although not perfect, was acceptable to RBM. And so, we find ourselves in uncharted territory, expecting one thing and having something totally different. Very surprised, quite frankly. And so, obviously, RBM is opposed to this and respectfully requests that the council refer back to the original PDD that was submitted, agreed by city staff and submitted by city staff, that was thoroughly vetted. And I think that there's a letter that's been presented. Mr. Hayes has the copy of that, more formally stating the opposition here. But, in, in sum, we have, we have two foundational problems. There, there are concerns about access. By tucking this parking away behind the building, I don't know if you've ever dreamed back there, but it is very tight. And there are concerns about safety. There's fire, there's criminal safety, there's the ability to access in the event of a problem. I can tell you that, that just looking at it at first blush, I have concerns. I sit on a planning and zoning commission for my, my city, okay? Looking at this, I would have a problem. Also, we have the concern about, when you're talking about collaboration, that's what a PDD is about, it's about collaboration, not the city unilaterally saying, here's how it's going to be. It's usually collaborative effort, and that's not the case on the current PDD, the way it's being presented. And finally, we have restrictions going on this PDD in terms of encompassing and circling fencing and gating off this entire property. There's nothing else on the block that's like this. It's entirely unlike any other property on this block. In fact, we have two other properties that have parking lots that go to the back that have free access to Clay Street. And, and one of them is a neighbor to this property. It, it's, it's, it's hard to understand why, why RBM is being treated single-handedly this way when what's, what the neighbors are being permitted to do is wholly different. And so, it feels singled out. And there's really no justification in the ordinances of the city to put up the, the shielding and the screening that have been called for, much less the gating. So, that's generally our position. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel.
Did you, I guess, thoroughly explain and give your reasons why you're not satisfied with the PDD? It was my understanding that you said it was the only one-way driving? Anything else?
Yeah, there are actually at, at least three.
There were three amendments that P&amp;Z did make to the original PDD. And so, is your, just to clarify, is your opposition to all three amendments?
Yes, the opposition is categorically to all the changes that were made to the PDD that was approved by city staff and agreed to by RBM.
Okay, thank you.
We have a second speaker.
Yes, ma'am, George Broody.
George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. I feel the uncomfortable feeling that I'm actually in partial agreement to what he was saying, which isn't completely true. But, so, one, one thing is, the, the lawsuit did not actually grant them, it wasn't about getting a parking lot. It was about the city not actually properly adjudicating the plat, combining the two lots. We were forced into that because we didn't follow state law in doing that in a timely fashion in the proper way. Therefore, it became one lot. It's my understanding that at the time that that was being done, that forced that whole lot, the entire lot, into a C2 zone, or what was it called? 21N at the time, zone. Because our zoning code would have made that whole thing be one, one zone. And we didn't officially change it, but that's what the zoning code was calling for. So, this PD is, is basically, as he just described. And fortunate that we have to accept this parking lot busting up. It's zone bleed is what's going on. But, we have to accept it because the one lot. And that, the PD isn't, isn't being applied for by the property owner because it's, it's the city trying to add restrictions to them. They already, because it's one business lot, it actually would transfer forward. I would say it's arguable, it's actionable in a court if somebody wanted to dispute it, that it's now a C2 zone. Therefore, they can put anything they want there, including an accessory parking lot. The only restriction that would be placed on them is they would have re-screening around it entirely because that's the, a boundary between RT and CT, or C2, or even the old zone. So, that would still be in place, but they would be allowed to exit out on decline, unfortunately. So, the questions I came to were, can the city create a PD without property owner consent even? I mean, it seems bizarre. If the property owner, not to mention that, as we discussed before, this is a PD that's less than the, the minimum requirement. Therefore, this appears to be spot zoning, and it appears to be sort of a punitive-type spot zoning, which both would be potentially actionable in court. And they appear to be litigate-type property owners. If the property owner refuses, isn't this another legal jackpot for the city? If the property owner refuses, but can't, but court upholds PD, isn't the property owner still allowed to continue as a C2 non-conforming use across the entire property? I would say they probably have an argument for that. Is, is this not the equivalent of spot zoning? I already said that. So, the conclusion, I would say the city has dropped the ball multiple times on this project. And the citizens are paying a price. We're going to pay a price regardless of how this ends up. Cut our losses, require the screening between C2 and RT zones, as we, I think, can legally do, and review development services policies and laws to prevent this from ever happening again. He's already said you're going to go into executive session. Until you get all the facts on this, I would not suggest moving forward with this. Just table it if you can't figure something out until you get better information. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers. All right, thank you. All right, Mike. Just simply table at this point, is that what you're recommending?
No, I'm recommending you...
Did I address you in executive session for some analysis and legal issues?
Oh, okay, but at the end of the meeting, or now?
What's the item number for executive session?
Just attorney consultation? Can, I just want to clarify one thing because I'm, I'm not against going to executive session, but I was told one time, whenever I was going to try to go into executive session for an item, that because it didn't have, this item is eligible for executive session listed next to it, we couldn't do that. And I was told that by our counsel, and now, and this one doesn't have it. So, if that's, because that's our normal practice, is if we're going to possibly go into executive session to do it for public information?
What is, what's the item, so I can compare to what you're saying to what we're talking about now? Like, when you were talking about your previous comparison?
I don't, I don't have the exact item.
I mean, I can't, can't really compare what you're saying if, if, if you can't spot the item. So, to know if it's the same or different?
Okay, it, it was probably a board appointment. I, I can't remember, I can get that to you at another time when I get it.
Just to clarify, a board appointment, so only the quasi-judicial boards are eligible for executive session for deliberation? And so, that, that may have been that clarification that was made at that time?
No, no, I, I understand that. It, respectfully, it wasn't. It was, it wasn't, it may have not even been a board appointment, I think it was. But, it was something we could go into executive session for, that I was told we could not because it didn't have, this item is eligible for executive session on the agenda. And instead, we tabled it, and our next meeting, it was added, that parenthesis was added. I'm just saying, in order for us to be consistent with how we're going into all these things, we just need to make sure that, because if, if that's the point of making sure our practice is held and we're being consistent with that, we should be consistent with that.
Yeah, we only typically...
If you look at, excuse me, if you look at 10 on the agenda, says clearly, city council, may is promoted by law adjourned to executive session anytime to discuss any matter listed above in the agenda. I'm telling you, this is eligible to go into executive session under 551071.
I, I agree, I agree.
What is that number again, Mike?
It's 55, yeah, 551.071.
I would like to move that we go into executive session under 551.071. I second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And we will recess into executive session. At 8:10, we are out of executive session and back into regular session. And we do have a motion, I believe. Is there someone who would like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. I'm going to move that we table this item for two weeks in light of some new information that we received just recently and haven't had time to fully read through and digest. And in the, in the meantime, I'm hopeful that we can have the owner and staff get together and have some, some productive conversation so that when we look at this again, we'll be perhaps in a different situation.
I'll second that.
Clarification on the motion, the...
Table this item.
To the next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting.
And that will be limited to that?
Sorry, not two weeks, yes, next regular meeting. Thank you.
Shelley, you're good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a second from Brenda. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, we are ready for 7B. Shelley?
Ordinance number 2022-24, second reading. An ordinance amending chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of an approximate 22.03 acre tract out of the Samuel Wallace survey number 113, abstract number 347, more commonly known as the north side of the 2300 block of East Main, from a medium-density residential zoning district R2 to a multifamily residential zoning district R3 and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, Drew.
Second reading, just here for questions, there are no changes?
Ma'am, Mayor, may I make a minor personal objection to that tie?
I don't know, can we get a second on that?
He wore the same color suit as you.
It's about Texas Tech tie.
Brenda, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Joe? Kim?
No.
Roman? All right. Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-24 on second reading. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, thank you. All right, we are ready for 8A. Shelley?
Construction agreement with Viking Construction, Inc. For 2022 slurry seal project in the amount of $314,894.50. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Kyle, I'm sorry.
Oh, you had it right the first time.
I should take my glasses off.
We're here tonight to ask for the authorization for the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Kerrville and Viking paving for $314,894.50. That will be for our slurry seal contract. We went out the bid, they are the low bidder. The next bid was right at $380,000. And so, we feel like we're getting a pretty good deal on it. We've used them before. We've actually have our consulting engineers done the evaluation too, and he also recommends that we use Viking paving. Give you a little update on what we've been doing. This is one of our methods for street repair. As you know, we have four different methods. We do the crack seal, slurry seal, what we're doing, what we're talking about tonight, melanoverlay, and then the full depth. The slurry seal process, we actually seal all the cracks first with the crack seal first, and then we come back in. And this is similar to putting a layer of oil and aggregate down. It's not really oil because it doesn't stay sticky like that. It, it actually dries and it doesn't stick to everything. And then, that, that's the wearing surface, so we're getting a little bit more life out of our streets too. So, on the board up here, you'll see the 2021 slurry seal project streets that we did. Those have all been completed. And the next graph, oop, there was a picture there earlier. Okay, so, any, these are the, these are the streets that we will be, that are under contract right now in front of us. So, that's what we're here tonight to ask for approval for.
All right, counsel, questions, comments? Roman?
No.
Joe, you ready to say something?
I just have a small, I can, I'm still allowed to vote on this if I live on one of the streets, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all?
That's it.
That's it? Brenda, any questions?
No, ma'am.
Roman, did you say no questions?
No, no questions.
Kim, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a construction contract with Viking Construction, Inc.
Do we have a second? Roman? All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. 8B, Shelley?
For the main purchase of materials for advanced metering infrastructure AMI project not to exceed $218,138. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and counsel. So, our advanced metering infrastructure, and we like to call that our AMI project, we're going to give you an update on what we've been doing and ask for permission. So, we just want to reiterate some problems that we were seeing and had of why we went to the AMI. So, in 2010, we kind of upgraded our metering system. Our guys used to walk by foot, house to house, meter by meter, and write down physical reads, come back to the office, and put it all in the system, and we'll get some billing. Then, we went to drive-by reading. So, you may see the guys out there slowly driving up neighborhood streets, and their antenna on their truck picks up the reads, and we come back to the office, download those. Well, with that, we started having some problems, like reads weren't picking up as often. We would miss a lot of books, having to go back out, just a lot of turn, round and round. Also, with that, that process, we couldn't capture a lot of the leaks and water loss because we, on a average month, we only go out to the meter just to read for billing, and we go back another month later to read, get a new read, and build a customer. So, in that timeframe, you know, once we bill out, the customer may get a high bill because they had a leak, and we never knew till reading time. We do do our edits and try to be proactive and go back out and double-check, but that's a lot of turnover, a lot of round and round. So, we reached out to Neptune, Neptune and core main providers we use to purchase all our products, just let them know the problems we were having and see what new technology was out there and what we can do to help solve some of our issues. So, they introduced us to the Neptune AMI products. And so, we kind of went with this product because our current assets, our meters and registers, all that would integrate real quickly into the system and, and sync to that software we would have to use. And the registers, those have a 20-year warranty life on them. So, what we had in the ground was in bulk, we already had a lot in the ground. So, if we found that we were having to replace those, we would send them back, and they would send us the new register. So, our costs, you know, we looked at all that kind of stuff. Neptune was telling us that if we, with our size of town and the number of customers we provide service to, we would need five data collectors across town. And if we use our existing V3 registers, we would get about 79% usability with the program. If we upgrade to the V4 registers, we could get possibly about 90%. So, we also were required to buy new antennas across the city. We would have to convert our reading software, which was inside at the time, to this Neptune 360 software. But, there was some pluses out of that. If we installed, our guys, they do it every month, change out meters, change out parts, registers. They're already doing those types of things, so we could take on the work ourselves. And so, we had some cost savings in that labor. We were able to phase this in into three phases over three fiscal years. And we do have a very good history with our vendor who we purchased all our products from, so we kind of want to continue that. This is a captive replacement. If we changed totally something different, that'd be way more cost. So, advanced metering infrastructure, kind of what exactly is that? So, it's a technology-based program with a two-way communication. So, the left picture there is your meter in the ground with the mushroom antenna on top. That meter, that antenna talks to the data collector, and then that data collector then talks to the office software. So, our clerks and technicians can use that software to... can use that software to get high alerts on, get alerts on the high-flow customers or capture leaks before they actually become major. As, as long as we're tracking and checking on this regularly, we can help a lot of folks out. Also, that's gonna reduce water loss in our system, and definitely it's gonna cut down on, or our response time for customers is gonna be way better. We can get on it right away and get back. We won't have to always leave out the office to go to the meter, to go track down all the technicalities, and then get back with the customer. And this AMI project also will support our Curville twenty fifty goals of enhancing our water, wastewater and drainage system. So, with those five data collectors that we are required to have in our phase one, which covers cycle two area of town, and that's the purple section in the middle, we chose this as our trial phase, kind of. It has a lot of commercial base, commercial businesses, as well as, it's pretty flat, and it's our smallest cycle, so if anything's gonna happen, we'd rather deal with less. But this Sunday, we captured some data for this presentation, and our collector that is on Holdsworth Drive sits on our stadium tank, and it picked up two thousand three hundred and sixty-one reads. On our phase two collectors, we actually put in two collectors in phase two, and that's this fiscal year. We have one that's on Panorama Drive, and that's in the Methodist and Camet area, we call that the jungle over there because we have all the trees and it's all wooded back there. And we also have another one on College Cove, which is located kinda across from Calvary Temple, up on the hill back there, all that area. So, Panorama on Sunday picked up twenty-five hundred reads and College Cove about fifteen seventy. So, that's all together, phase one, phase two, that's about sixty-four hundred counts that we were able to capture reads on. And of course, we still have phase three to go into, so that phase three section will have two collectors, we'll have one on the River Hills Tower, and then one sitting on the Summit Water Tank. Okay, so just a little bit of updates on the phase one and phase two. So, in fiscal year twenty-one, we asked for two hundred and ten thousand dollars to kick off the project. That cycle two, which is the middle of town, has about twenty-four hundred and ninety customers. So, the meter technicians were successful at changing out about twenty-three hundred antennas, registers, whatever was necessary to get the connectivity. So, prior to AMI, it took us about six hours to read this area of town. Now that majority, we are ninety-two percent installed in this, in this section of town, it's taken us about two hours. So, we had some hard savings with our guys actually installing that product, all the product was sixty-nine thousand dollars we saved in labor costs or paying out for the install. So, phase two, which is this fiscal year twenty-two, we asked for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We have nearly thirty-four seventy-five, three thousand four hundred and seventy-five customers in cycle one, and that's the Methodist and Camet west side of town. We've, we've been successful about changing about thirty-four hundred of those pieces of equipment out there. We did take typically about eight hours to read this area of town. Like I said, there's a lot of wooded area and hidden places, so we had to always go back to pick up those reads, it didn't always get it the first time. So, now we're looking at about three to four hours it takes us to read cycle one. We had a hundred and two thousand dollars in savings for our guys installing all that equipment out there, and we're about ninety-eight percent installed in that area. So, of course, our goal is to be a hundred percent installed, syncing, capturing everything, but there's always challenges. Right now, our main challenges are supply issues. So, with supply, obviously we can't get it in, so most of our registers in the ground are V threes. The V fours actually work way better, we've, we're finding, so as we can, we're changing out the V threes for the V fours to get better reception. And also, our lids, I know y'all have heard about the lids a lot lately, but they, we require a mushroom antenna. Most of the lids we had were old metal, just flat plane lids, but since we can't get our plastic ones in that, that the antenna sits in, we're having to torch our metal lids to fit the antennas until our product comes in. It's working, but it takes time to get, to have the time to torch the lids and fit the antennas, so that's why nothing's fully installed yet, even though we're into phase two. So, just, just a little bit of metrics and outcome of us using our Neptune three sixty software. So, our in-house inquiries, we are using three sixty, increased that by seventy percent more, and in-house inquiries is just any time a customer comes in or calls needing information, or they had a leak, or they needed an adjustment, they have a concern, we're not having to send the guys out every time to go do a data log or go check things out, we can just log into the software and break down their monthly, daily, hourly consumption if need be. Our field, field work has increased by using three sixty by fifty percent. So, as Tony explained to me, he said usually when the guys, they're out on a call for another specific reason, but they may have a neighbor walk up and have questions, or more comes out of the call he went out to do, but they want to dig a little bit deeper, he can just get in his truck on his laptop and go right into the, the software and pull out more data if need be. Occupant changes, so just want to explain what that is. So, an occupant change is basically when one tenant is moving out of the property and another one's going in, but no service is being cut off. So, we used to have to leave the office, go to the meter, get that last read under the old tenant, and that new read picks up for the new tenant. Now, we can just go into the software, get the last read, complete the service order, set and done, that customer's walking out of the office with a new account. Edits, we are able to reduce our edits by about forty percent right now. That's just less truck rolls, less going back out to reread, we can just log into it and get live reads. If it'd pick up the first time when we drove by or the reception came through for this particular billing, we could just try again today. And then locker pools, this one more, we have reduced those by about thirty-five percent. Locker pools are work orders we send out for the day after cutoffs, customers who failed to make their payment by the deadline, so they are turned off, and if the next morning they hadn't paid their outstanding balance, we go back out to their meter and determine if they used water from the last time. When we turn it off, we get a read, so if they, if the reading has changed or increased, we know they're using water, they turned it back on overnight when no one was watching. So, we. You're not supposed to. So, now, we don't have to leave to go do that, we can determine that right there with the software, we don't have to go physically there to go get that new read. So, each data log or edit or fill chase, whatever it may be, usually requires at least one to two truck rolls to take care of that, that business. So, annually, we do approximately five hundred sixty-five data logs or extra work orders, so if, once everything's implemented with AMI, we, we hope to save about nine hundred truck rolls or four hundred and fifty hours of man labor a year. So, here on phase three, we are, we had already budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand. We have nearly four thousand two hundred and eighty-five customers in this cycle. It is currently taking us about eight hours to read all of cycle three. If we do the, well, when we do the install, our guys will be saving about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand with that staff labor. So, of course, with supply issues and everything that the whole world is going through, Core Main is telling us lead times for what we need for phase three is gonna be anywhere between four to nine months. So, tonight, we are asking to make, put in our order earlier than fiscal year twenty-three. No cash is going to exchange hands until we actually get the product or invoice for it. So, with that, we're asking for you to approve the motion for our Core Main purchase to get our advanced metering infrastructure and not to exceed the invoice of two hundred and eighteen thousand one thirty-eight.
You sold me. Council, questions, comments?
I have one question.
Kim, or Joe?
Sorry, you were asking Kim, and I interrupted.
I don't have one, go ahead, Council member.
You say on phase three, we should have hard savings of approximately a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Is that per year or is that total?
That is for the install of that entire cycle of those reg, that equipment, just going in the ground one time cost.
Correct, but we'll continue to have savings, we won't have to do those truck rolls every year anymore.
Yes, sir.
So, it'll pay for itself eventually.
Yeah, definitely saves, saves, as we elaborated, their staff time, it's able to be.
Vehicle, wear and tear. Responsible to the customer quicker.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt.
All right, Brenda, any comments, questions?
Uh, no, just the, the amount. The invoice should be coming in for this when, do you know?
Uh, it's typically, once they ship, they'll invoice, so we're asking to put in our order right now in fiscal year twenty-two, but chances are we won't get the.
Right, you're not expecting it to come in prior to twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, fiscal year.
Right, right.
We hope it'll be four months, it might be nine months. That's why we're trying to get it in order now.
Okay, okay, that's all I needed. All right, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the purchase of materials needed for completion of the AMI project.
Second?
Second.
From Kim. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rena.
Thank you, guys. You've been doing a lot of work, we appreciate you. Alrighty, we are ready for nine A, the first of four board appointments. Shelley, read us our short introduction.
Appointments to the Main Street Advisory Board, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll take the lead on this one. So, just briefly, there are two, I'm sorry, four vacancies. We have, we received two, five applications in total, two for reappointment as ex officio non-voting members, and three other applications, one for reappointment as a regular member, and two new appointments. Unfortunately, the mayor and I, the mayor and I were the interview team for this one, and we spoke with Emily Phillips, and although she doesn't meet the qualifications for the Main Street Advisory Board because she's not a property owner or business owner, nor is she an employee of any business in the Main Street District, we couldn't appoint her to one, but we did talk to her and said we'd be happy to consider appointment on another board that she meets the qualifications for, so we're gonna be talking to her about that. So, with that said, we're left with four other applicants, so that kinda makes it easy for us. So, I'll make a motion to appoint the four other applicants, which are Rachel Fitch as an ex officio member from HDBA, Catherine Howard, ex officio member from TERS number one, Dana Howard, a reappointment as a regular member, and Lonza Teague, a new appointment as a regular member.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
From Joe. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. And I want to say before, I forget, we've had great response to all of our boards, and I just want to say thank you to everybody who has applied. We very, very much appreciate it. All right, nine B. Shelley?
Appointments to the Senior Services Advisory Committee, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, and the interview team was Councilmember Kim and Joe. Would one of you like to?
There are six vacancies with five applications. I'd be happy to recommend we approve, we appoint those five that have applied.
All right, do you want to, do you want to give their names and whether it's reappointment or appointment, Joe?
Be happy to. Marilyn Zizmic, who's eligible for reappointment, Mike Easor, Christina Kleima, or Kleima, eligible for reappointment, Karen Maddox eligible for reappointment, and Kenneth Disco.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
From Kim. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, nine C. Shelley?
Appointments to the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, TERS, board of directors, and appoint the TERS chair. Oh, and there's no citizen speaker signed up.
All right, thank you. All right, Roman, you and I were also the interview team. Would you like to read this in?
Sure, we have four vacancies for this one. We received four applications, all for reappointments. The only thing I don't know if Council wants to discuss right now, or if we can go into executive session, is for the chair. Current chair is Kenneth Early. I don't know if anybody wants to go into executive session to discuss that position or?
Does anyone need to? Why don't you make the motion with just reappointing him as chair?
So, I'll move to reappoint the four applicants, Kenneth Early, John Harrison, Pat Murray, and Mindy Wendely, and further move to keep Kenneth Early and reappoint him as the board chair.
I'll second that.
We have a second from Brenda. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And our very last one, myself and Brenda were the interview team. Brenda?
Yes, we had four openings, and we had Mr. Brinkben reapply and for reappointment as the chair. We had three new applications, one from Ms. Amy Farrell, Ms. Becky Nutt, and Ms. Lynn Niles, and because we have two regular positions open and one alternate position open, Judy and I agreed to just appoint them based on when those applications were received. So, that puts Amy Farrell and Becky Nutt as members, and Lynn Niles as an alternate for that board, and I will make my motion to that effect.
Okay, I have a question. I think on this one, I think the, the board makes their own appointment for chair.
That's just for the alternate position.
Okay, I, I, okay, I misunderstood, I thought you.
No, no, no.
That you were appointing him as chair.
No, no, no.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, all right, second on that?
Pablo on that.
Pablo?
Yes, yes.
Reappointment?
That's where I, I thought she had mentioned yours.
So, your alternate member is Lynn Niles, is that right?
Yes, yes. All right, I will second that, and all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous, and thank you very much. And we have reached the end of the evening. Does anyone have something for future agendas? Point once, point twice. At eight thirty-seven, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.